That's the only question, I think it was a five-year contract, I thought, well, if you were thinking about another company and I maybe didn't want to sign a five-year, maybe you're comfortable with them.
All right.
You love that.
I believe we're ready to conduct the meeting. We will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Joe Cronin and an invocation by Mr. Eland. Can you start out?
Yes. We can do this. You want me to pray first? All right, let's do that. All right, let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight and just ask for your wisdom and your blessing upon this council. And we just pray for all those who are in need tonight. We know our country is going through a very trying time. And there are no good answers right now because we know that someone's going to be upset about whichever way that you go. So we just pray that you'll give us the wisdom to look forward, make a call. It's going to be the one that would have your grace and your wisdom anointed upon it. We thank you for those things that are coming before us tonight, and we just pray that your will will be done. We ask all this in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, do we?
Councilmember Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Brazel. Councilmember Eland.
Here.
Councilmember Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Okay, first up tonight is several conditional use permits. And these bills are up for final passage. We start off with bill number 4835.
Bill number 4835, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 20-01 for one, outdoor storage of boats and recreational vehicles; and two, storage of construction equipment and heavy machinery, new and used, to TMM Wentzville LLC property owner.
Do we have any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
This is in my district in my last meeting, it's a perfect place for it. Community development is addressed any concerns anybody would have. There's no reason why this shouldn't be passed.
All right, also, we have Exhibit C that has been timely received, and the bill is ready for final passage. So we just needed to add that on to that information, on to bill number 4835. Any other questions or comments on this conditional use permit? Okay.
Bill number 4835, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 20-01 for one, outdoor storage of boats and recreational vehicles; and two, storage of construction equipment and heavy machinery, new and used, to TMM Wentzville LLC property owner. Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel. Councilmember Eland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4835 passes. Next up is the amended bill number 4836.
Amended bill, bill number 4836, an ordinance amending ordinance number 17-070, granting conditional use permit CUP 17-06 for rural recreational activity and a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other events to Edward and Tammy Berrio property owners.
Questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
This was, the amendment was to do what Mr. Brazel suggested and change the one time from 10:45 to 11:00, so we'd be uniform through the county. And this is a real good facility.
It's an ordinance amended.
I'm sorry, this has been a good facility, and employee, he's growing, he's employing more people. And everybody's pretty happy in the neighborhood, and his customers are happy as well. So it's a good thing for everybody.
At the Planning and Zoning Commission, these folks appeared, and they seem to be going above and beyond, you know, what is required to make this a very, very nice place.
It's a beautiful place, he's done a nice job.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Amended bill number 4836, an ordinance amending ordinance number 17-070, granting conditional use permit CUP-06 for rural recreational activity and a facility for weddings, wedding receptions, and other events to Edward and Tammy Berrio property owners. Councilmember Brazel.
Yes.
Councilmember Eland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin.
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4836 passes. Next up is a public hearing, CDBG and Home Consortium programs. Is that correct? We have a public hearing?
We've received no public hearing comments.
Okay, all right. Anybody have anything to weigh in here? Okay, we will move on. Next up is public comments, and we will read the public comments that we've received.
We've received two comments, both regarding the COVID-19. The one is from Christian O'Donnell. Hello, the governor is talking about reopening the economy May 4th. Will St. Charles County follow that order, or will ours be extended like St. Louis County? Missouri has not hit its peak yet, and as I do agree, some things can be opened. I do not think spas, hair salons, and nail salons should be opening. Any profession directly touching other people, I feel is unsafe, and I want to know if this has been discussed for St. Charles County, as you can make a decision to keep businesses like that closed for a longer amount of time. The other message is email received, there is no name on it. If we open before our neighbors, are we worried about people coming from the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County, where there are much more cases to do business in St. Charles County? Do you think this will boost our number of cases in the county?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I should have mentioned earlier, we are conducting the meeting under a state of emergency, and we are allowing the public to participate through virtual presence and comments that are submitted and to the meeting by the required time will be incorporated into the record of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that ends public comments. Next up is an oral report from our county executive.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Want to give you an update on what has been going on, what went on today with regard to COVID-19, and what I anticipate will begin happening tomorrow. Want to just quickly go over the history here of these various executive orders. Just real quickly, March 16th, we've prohibited gatherings of 50 or more. On March 17th, we prohibited on-premise consumption of food or drink, that's the one that affected the restaurants primarily. On March 19th, we prohibited the gatherings of 10 or more, and these have all, were all in response to the CDC recommendations. Originally it was 50, that's when we went to 50, when they went to 10, we went to 10. It's in a single indoor space, our enclosure, maximum of 10, are prohibited gatherings of 10 or more. And then finally, on March 23rd, prohibiting county residents to leave their home and surroundings. And this is the one I want to call your attention to, because this is the one that's most misunderstood. If you remember, the day before that, St. Louis City and County announced they were going to be doing stay-at-home orders, and they were going to be identifying essential and non-essential businesses. What we did was different. We didn't decide what was essential and what was non-essential, because in the first place, what's essential to one person may not be essential to another. And secondly, I just was not comfortable with us making that decision and saying, this business has to close, and that one can stay open. So what we did is to prohibit people going outside their home or their property, except for employment, like the other two, and except for activities they deem essential to their physical, mental, and spiritual well-being, while ordering all businesses to enforce the social distancing. Now, let me go quickly here to some interesting, I didn't know it was that far down. I just want to go to this one, because I wasn't sure. Glad that it did. And what this shows here is a comparison of St. Charles and St. Louis County. In St. Louis County, where they did basically order certain businesses to close that were non-essential, and allow the others to be open. We took the opposite tact and basically left it up to the people to decide what was essential, with the understanding that if they didn't show up at the businesses, the businesses would close on their own eventually. And the result, if you look at it here, at least as of 4/11, this is, it's from a Google, in which they use various techniques and everything to determine to the extent to which people are leaving their homes and going certain places and everything. The important thing here, if you look at St. Charles County on retail and recreation, we had a decline of 50%. St. Louis County, where they actually ordered people to close, only declined 49%. So we did actually a little better. And with regard to the workplace, the decline was the same. So the good news here, there's two pieces of good news. Number two, we didn't order anybody to close, but number two, it had the same effect, allowing the people to basically dictate which businesses would close and which would stay open. All right, going back here. This is the governor's orders now, and on April 6th, he did order non-essential businesses to close. And at that point, from April 6th on, we were basically under the governor's order, as far as businesses closing, not ours, but the governor's. He imposed a 10-person limit. On April 16th, he extended that stay-at-home order, and of course, today, he adopted, effective on May 4th, the Show Me Strong Recovery Plan. And here's what's in there, if you haven't, if you haven't been following closely, and he didn't go into a lot of detail today. We've got some of this from what was sent out after 3 o'clock. But, "Under the governor's plan, social distancing will be enforced and remain in effect. Residents must stay six feet apart. This prohibition, however, does not apply to family members or individuals performing jobs, duties that require close contact. And you can see that those people will have to wear masks or take other precautions. And that's basically the barbers, the cosmetologists, and others with a similar profession." So they will, they will no longer be considered non-essential, actually, they do a way with a distinction between essential and non-essential. "The social distancing requirements still applies to barbers, cosmetology shops, hair salons, and tattoo parlors. Gyms and hotel swimming pools are to adhere to strict sanitation protocols. Restaurants may offer dining in-service, provided the limitations on social distancing and other precautionary public health measures, including proper spacing of at least six feet between tables, and a lack of communal seating areas to parties that are not connected or properly adhered to." So again, this will provide an opportunity for restaurants, if they so decide, to reopen, and to serve people under those limited conditions. The governor continues to urge drive-through and pickup and delivery options when possible. Places of worship, under the governor's order, social distancing is still required, but they are allowed to hold in-person services, have to be six feet apart, I assume. Common practices like shaking hands and everything are discouraged by the governor's order. And of course, they still encourage the churches to be careful and to practice proper social distancing. My guess is that they're going to be pretty conservative about that, and hopefully go through a step-by-step process to try to get back to something like normal. Locations, events such as movie theaters, weddings, school graduations, still have to adhere to social distancing. Fraternal organization, youth sports camps, again, the social distancing is not leaving, it's not going away. The role of public health authorities, including our own, will remain the same. The guidance in his previous order regarding retail sales, grocery stores, with the square foot limitations of 25% or 10%, those stay, those stay. Now, we never did adopt anything like that. So that is one thing in which, in which we really, you know, again, we were dependent on the governor, we will continue to be. Businesses should encourage continued use of teleworking, et cetera, and we'll be doing that in the county. Now, here's, let's see, I asked him to switch these two around. Yeah, that's just an old one. What I, I sent these to you, and if you remember, the one I wanted to have up here was the one that showed a steep, about two or three weeks ago, it showed a steep increase in the curve. And there was a, the curve for St. Charles, Jefferson, Franklin County was really just about the same as the curve for St. Louis six days earlier. And I was concerned that what happened in St. Louis was going to happen to us six days later. That did not happen. Instead, what we've got is this on April 26th. And you can see that we haven't totally flattened the curve, but we are in much, much better shape than St. Louis City and County. Those numbers on the right there, that's the number of cases per 10,000. And you can see that we're at 13.9, I think Jefferson 11.5, and Franklin 10.4. But up on the top, you've got St. Louis County at 29, more than twice ours, and 32, which is a whole lot worse. So this is, I think, the most important slide you're going to look at, and this is the reason, the reason that I think it's not necessary for us to necessarily do everything that St. Louis County is doing. Now, there are, and I'm sure if you watched the governor's press conference today, had various people come up and talk about his four pillars, and progress that the state has made with regard to PPE, with regard to testing. He was talking about the entire state, since we're part of the state, we're part of that good news. But one of the other criteria, that's not necessarily in the governor's, but is in the president's suggestion, and that is not to relax the stay-at-home orders until you've had a 14-day period of improvement. And if you look at the graph there, that shows the number of cases on each day, up until the day going back, I'm not sure how far. But it shows there, the day that we, oh, from the day we started the stay-at-home order. And I want you to see that, just to show that it did have an impact, it did have a positive impact, that there's a 14-day incubation period. 14 days after we instituted the order, we hit the peak, okay? And after that 14th day, as you can see, we've started to come down. That black line is an average per day and so forth, but you can see there has been a decline. We've, you know, bent the curve, so to speak. So we do have the decline, and that's, and that's good, and I think it is because of some of the things we've done. And, but again, we, by doing that, we've met one of the criteria, in addition to the four the governor has, that the president's put out there. This is just another, these are the contacts to a positive COVID-19 case identified by the date, okay? This is when we call the people and ask them, and do the contact tracing, when did you first feel, start feeling bad? The other, the other one is based on the day we found out. This is based on the day that they told us they first started having the symptoms. So again, it's, generally, it's the same story, but a little bit different in terms of the timing. And this is the number of St. Charles County by symptom onset days. Did I get that wrong, Joanne?
You reversed them.
This is what I, what I just said of the last one? This is the one. So what is, what is this one?
This is, and Demetrius is on the line, he can contradict me, but I believe this is, so once we call a positive that we get back the test on, and we ask them about their contacts, these are the numbers of contacts each day that are added by the date that they.
Okay, so this is not the growth in cases, but the growth in contacts by their department.
Right.
Okay.
So when you see that almost 700 people that were following, this is how that was amassed?
I apologize for that mistake. Again, this is, this is what we looked at before. This is, you know, we have a great system of monitoring our roads, have had for years, and usually, we use that information to convince MODOT we need a wider road, or another, new road, or something. You can see here that the stay-at-home order did have an effect, did have an effect, but it's.
What's the last day on there?
Today.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, Sunday.
Yesterday, I heard just a lot of people.
There were a lot of people.
Yeah, I think, I think that's starting to erode, I think more and more people are thinking, yeah. And of course, you can see the Sundays, the next one's even more so, because that's the bridge traffic. There's the bridge traffic, and you can see the weekends on there. But you can see it's starting to creep up a little bit, even with the orders that are in place. Anyway, given all those facts, we intend tomorrow to go ahead and amend all of our orders that are stricter than the governor's, to go ahead and come in line with the governor's orders. Okay, and there's a few things that, yeah, we'll do that. We just found out at 3 o'clock today, so we didn't have time to draft the, draft the language. But we'll issue that tomorrow, it'll be effective on the same date as the governor's, which is a week from today. And like I said, anything that we're more strict will amend, so that we're in contact with him. I think in terms of things where we were less strict, like not picking, not deciding ourselves who's essential and non, I think we'll just leave that alone. I just assume, have people know that we're leaving it up to them in that regard, or at least, or to the governor, at least until Monday, and then it'll be up to them again. Yes, sir?
First of all, as I guess as a citizen, an elected official, and a businessman in this county, I think you and the governor are spot on in your reaction to this, okay? I think the orders that you did were common sense, I don't think they hurt people too bad, but they also helped a lot of people too, as well, economically. So I'm going to compliment you on that. But I do have a problem, and I've been going, I've told Joanne a little bit this, about this. This Dr. Alex Garza, who's the head of the pandemic for the region, okay? And he's quoted in the paper saying, "Our best marker for what's going on is more testing." And on this grid here, it says, "Until more testing is available." The state, Dr. Williams, with the Department of Health and Senior Services, he says, "We got all the testing you want." Donald Trump says that we have beautiful testing, tremendous testing. Garza says.
Yeah, I was planning to go into that until I saw the governor's press, oh, go ahead.
Can I just finish for a second? Okay, so it's repeatedly in the paper, this Dr. Williams, and I called his, talked to his secretary, gave him, sent him an in-depth email, but I'm sure he's busy, hasn't responded. He's saying they can do 70,000, they've done 70,000 tests, and they can do 7,000 a day. That's what he said repeatedly in the paper, and it's on DHSS's website too, these numbers are. So I'm not making them up, neither is the post. My question to this is, we have 7% of the population, we have a little shy of 10% of the cases, and this might, why are we not getting our proportionate share of testing? You know, if you look at the numbers, if they've done, they have 70,000, they've done 70,000 tests, somewhere between, anywhere between 5,000 and 7,000 should be our people, because we were 7% of the population. But we've only done a little over 600 tests. So that's my problem. In fact, proportions, you would think we would have between 5,000 and 7,000 tests done in this county, and we've had a little better than 600, according to the numbers that reported us.
Can I speak to that for a moment?
You don't want me to?
No, of course not.
Let me first of all say that this has been a sore spot.
And that's not anybody in the county's dropping the ball.
Let me just say this has been a sore spot, and what is, let's see, it's 7 o'clock, 4 o'clock yesterday afternoon, we, for the umpteen time, raised that issue to Dr. Garza and his folks, that we really don't know exactly what our testing numbers are. We have to assume they're not, they're being fair, and they're testing our people as much as anybody else. But we can't say that for sure. Joanne, why don't you give us more details?
We got 1/10th of a percent of the amount of tests that they're calling for, 1/10th of a percent, and we got 7% of the population.
Yes, sir. And so a couple of things sort of come together here. When the state first started testing, the only source of tests was through the CDC strictly, pardon me, CDC to the state lab. We got five tests, but we had to have permission to use them. We were not allowed to use, for a number of days into this, but one of the tests. That's when the nursing home in the St. Charles City area occurred, and we got permission to use the other four. And in fact, back in those days, before there was a shortage of the swab sticks, there were enough swabs in there that that nursing home got 13 tests out of those four kits and got them into the state lab. So in the beginning, it was all about complete and total shortage, only path was through the state lab. So then things started to expand a little bit. The CDC and the federal government authorized the private labs. They swung into action, they got some of LabCorp and Quest, they got some of their tests swung into the Midwest. Obviously, they were also testing on the East Coast, which was a real hotbed, and on the West Coast, which was a real hotbed, but they did get some tests. So we started to see more, but we weren't in command of those. So if you were going to a private lab to get tested, it was on your doctor's order or on a hospital order, but it wasn't through us.
But to be clear, this is, this is.
You're going to wait till Mr. Brazel gets back.
This is state test results, this isn't LabCorp or Quest, this is 70, he's saying they've done 70,000 at the state level, and only 600 of them are residents of our county.
Well, I'd like to know.
Somebody's fibbing, okay?
There is a third source of testing, and that now is the hospitals themselves have developed tests. The state is very aware of the problems and the needs we have around testing, as are the. the hospitals, as are we. And so we have a coalition of folks, I was talking to the chairman this morning. We, we are all trying to get together to increase our capacity to buy tests, because we are not a high priority area in the United States. But we are still getting better. There's no doubt about it. Things are getting better, they're not getting worse. But now it's gotten more complicated, because there's diagnostic testing, and then there's the surveillance testing that's going to tell us a lot about the general health of the area.
But if you check the DHSS site, it says the testing's free, okay, number one, and number two, it's...
If you go through the state, it is.
It says, if you go through the state lab, and I'm not talking about the other ones, I'm just going on state lab. If they've done 70,000 tests in Missouri, why don't we have...
Let me tell you two more pieces.
Thousands.
Okay. Well, first of all, if there are 70,000 tests, or 7,000 a day being done in Missouri, we don't know when they're being done. So, but I will tell you that on the 7th of April, Dimitri Sanzey Chapman, your public health director, ordered all of the private labs, all of the hospitals, and the state to report to him by zip code of the address of the person who was tested, zip code of the place where they were tested, and a number of other factors. We understand that tomorrow, there is a good chance that they are finally going to have their data cleaned up enough that they can respond to that.
Now, they say on the DHSS site that they've opened three testing centers in St. Charles County. They've got that, just that, they put that on there yesterday, I believe, this morning, okay? So what they're saying on their site's totally different than what the reality is here, okay?
Let's do it, too.
Well, I mean, I will tell you that there are sites that get opened, like there was a site that got opened in the city of St. Louis, and it had, what did the mayor tell us, three tests that they had when they opened the site? So when they used the three tests, they were out of tests, and they closed the site back down. So, yeah, I mean, you, you need, we need a lot more testing, and they keep telling us there's true hope on the horizon, but as the county executives of both St. Charles and St. Louis County said to them yesterday, you know, "We keep hearing this, but it doesn't happen, and we know that it's not because of the hospital systems it's not happening, that you all are hoping, hope it happens as well." But we, you know, it's sort of like, we'll see it, when we see it, we'll believe it.
Apparently, we're not a high priority.
We're not. And right now, on the diagnostic tests...
Well, we had, we actually had some diverted early, right?
We, we did, we, I was going to include that, but I, the councilman didn't want to listen to me ramble. So just so you know, the state got 16 of the highly prized Abbott tests, testing machines. Those are the 15-minute diagnostic tests. They are coveted throughout the nation. There are private citizens trying to buy them at 5, 10, 100 times their value. We not only were awarded one of the 16 by the state, city got one, St. Louis County got two. So four of them came to this area. We also got a very large volume of tests with it compared to the total 125 of the actual tests that they have. And they're beginning to be able to source some tests for that. So we're hopeful that that will continue to grow as well.
I'm getting complaints from people in my district that say, "You can't get a test unless you've got a hell of a fever, you're bad sick." In fact, especially people that got exposed to that, through that Postmasters actions in Wentzville. So I mean, there's people that have been exposed, they know they've been exposed to it, they get a cough, but they're not running 103 fever or whatever, so they can't get a test. And that, to me, it's ludicrous, we have that problem, when they say they've done 70,000 tests statewide, and we've only got 600 tests in this county.
When we have testing on demand for people who are symptomatic, or the contacts to the people who are symptomatic, and when we have surveillance testing, we will be far better off. But that's going to be probably a ways away. We hope it's two to three weeks away, but hoping doesn't necessarily bring it here.
I mean, this guy, I don't know with this Dr. Williams, he, he completes, these states in there, we have excess capacity. And what's, so there's a disconnect somewhere.
There is.
Okay? Thank you.
And again, I...
Oh, I was just going, I remember hearing that they were going to allow testing to be done at pharmacies. I can't remember if that was the governor, or the president, or some crackpot somewhere, but do, do you know anything about that?
I didn't hear that one, so I can't, but we can find, I mean, in the end, there wouldn't be any reason not, when there's sufficient.
Yeah, just like you can go get your flu shot, you could go and get a test.
We can find places, we just can't find the tests. But anyway, before the, the governor's people went ahead and went through all these testing things, I felt like I had to address it, and my opening comment was, "The situation is better, but still inadequate." And, and yeah, there are some questions about the numbers.
Show us the tests.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, we, we, sure, we don't have it as bad as St. Louis County, but we got it a hell of a lot worse than any, any rural county, okay?
We've had a...
Okay. So I mean, that, we should be getting our fair share of the tests. I, you know, I'm, I'm to the point where, this guy don't call me back in a couple of days, this Dr. Williams, I'm going to go to the two state senators and the state legislators and say, "We're paying the same taxes as everybody else in Missouri. Why are we getting a 10th of the percent, a 10th of a percent of the tests of our populations, all we've tested, okay? It ain't right."
We've had a conference call with the governor the last three Tuesdays, and in each of those, we've raised this. And of course, he keeps assuring us, you know, "Help is on the way," just as the hospitals in St. Louis have. But no, it's not here yet, not, not sufficient.
How many Missouri residents have been tested, do we know, total?
Uh...
70,000?
Yes, they claim 71,000 tests in today's report.
And what was the percentage of those people who had the COVID-19 virus?
Two and a half percent.
Just about, just about 11%.
11%. So if you took that, is it, is it, I sent you guys that, Dr. Erickson, and their theory is, is if you take that 11% of the total population of the state of Missouri, because if that's how you would extrapolate those numbers, then your percentage of people who've already had the disease is much higher than the number that we even know. And then, so the numbers of people who contracted the disease, the people who get healthy from the disease, and the people who die from the disease, the death rate would be so low compared to the flu rates. Did you look at that tape, that, those doctors?
I did.
I mean, I don't know, I just think the numbers, that we, we're focused so much on these numbers, and it's like, how real are they? Because all the models that we followed from the start, it's all we knew, and I, it's, we did what we had to do, I get it. But we know now that those models were wrong, and we know now that those theories were wrong. So when you have the data that we have now, shouldn't we be following fact rather than fiction? And so we were following what we thought we had to follow, and it's no one's fault. But I'm just saying that, and I think, Steve, what you've done, and you've had, you and I've had quite a few conversations, you did what you had to do, and you're doing what you had to do now with the governor, but, you know, we're focusing on all these numbers so much, it doesn't make sense.
This doesn't show we were wrong, Joe. This doesn't show we were wrong.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're wrong with the numbers.
By doing this, by doing this the first 14 days, but by doing it the first 14 days, we reduced the number significantly.
No, no, no one was wrong, but what I'm saying is, is they're not extrapolating the numbers accurately.
Yeah, okay.
They're not.
We're going to be discussing this the next 10 minutes.
I know, you could go, we could go back and forth.
And just, just to be clear what I'm saying, if we were only getting a 10th of a percent of the entire road budget for this county, or this state, we'd be raising hell.
Oh, I understand.
We're getting a 10th of a percent of the state staff that's...
But you're focusing so much on these tests.
That is, because everybody says that's the key to moving forward.
That's false. That's absolutely false.
Steve?
Yeah.
Continue.
Um, I think this is the last thing, yeah. I want to make sure, just take this opportunity, make sure people that are listening, understand the difference between a stay-at-home order and a quarantine order.
Okay.
I even see journalists, you know, and headline writers getting, getting the two mixed up. What we've been talking about, and what all the controversy has been about, is the stay-at-home orders, in which we're ordering everybody, whether they're infected or not, to stay at home except for certain situations. That is what we're, that's what we're, we are relaxing here. The quarantine order is entirely different thing. And the quarantine is what we do after we're notified that a person is infected, and the health department calls them, finds out who they've been in the contact with, talks to those people, basically traces the contact, and all the people that are infected, and maybe even some of the people that have had close contact with an infected person, are ordered to quarantine. And we've had, what, over almost 900 contacts like that with, with people? And we're, we're at 600-plus active quarantines. And I don't want anybody to think that by relaxing the stay-at-home order, we're going to somehow relax the quarantine order and let people who are actually infected leave their home and, you know, go out and shop and eat in a restaurant. Now, you know, we're limited on how we can enforce that, and we've had tremendous response, I think, by the people of St. Charles County cooperating with us on this. And I think, you know, 99.9% of them understand, if you're sick, you've got to stay home, or else you're going to infect a whole bunch of other people. The infection rate three weeks ago was 2.3, and, per person, for everybody who had the infection, would infect 2.3 other people. And for the last week or so, it's been down under 1, okay? So again, we've made progress, and that's why some people, doctors, are urging us, "Hey, don't stop now, because we're making this progress, we don't want to slide back." And that's strictly a, you know, a judgment call that has to be made. And the two people who wrote letter to us, letters to us, are not going to be happy with what I've just announced, but, you know, we'll, we'll hope that, we'll hope that I'm wrong. And one thing I would tell them is, we're not ordering people to leave their home, okay? That's the good thing about going in this direction, we're not ordering anybody to leave. And in fact, I think some of the people who, who think that just opening these businesses, all of a sudden, the economy's going to come back. I wish it would, but I'm afraid it won't. It took two and a half years after 9/11 before we had the same number of people flying as we did the day before. So what I would really love to do at another, at our next meeting, not then, the meeting after that, is actually come up here and, and show people, "Hey, we've made progress," and start actually encouraging them to leave, and, 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 and letting them know that we think it's safe. Now, we can't guarantee it's safe now, but what we can guarantee is on these quarantines, the county health department has done absolutely everything we can to identify these people and keep them in their homes until they're well. And we can guarantee them that we've done everything we can to make sure when they go to that restaurant, the person sitting behind them doesn't have COVID-19. But that's all we can do right now. I hope these numbers continue to improve, uh, to improve. In the meantime, we need to continue the social distancing. And I've talked to several restaurateurs, and they vary, some are biting at the bit, they get open on Monday, and others are, are very concerned, because they, as business people, they understand that their customers are going to be looking to them to do everything they can to make sure that they're safe. And a lot of them understand, if, if they don't do that, I mean, they could have a bigger problem down the road if, if people come in and are infected in their, in their establishment. So it's, it's, I mean, I've had to make a tough decision today. I think every business person out there has a tough decision ahead of them, whether to, whether to open. They don't have a choice on the social distancing, but I think, and again, I was proud of the fact that, that our people made the right decision to not go to non-essential businesses. I have confidence in, in people of St. Charles County, they're going to make the right decisions here. They're going to not go to places that haven't taken the necessary precautions, and they're going to protect themselves and their families. And another, another thing that, every year, we, I don't know, last two or three years, two out of the last three years, I think we've been named the healthiest county in the state. I think that's one of the reasons why you see that divergence, and you see our numbers are half of what St. Louis County is, okay? We're very lucky. We, we don't have as many poor people as some other places do. The people that we have tend to make better decisions on lifestyle choices, and, and yes, we have health problems like everybody, but not quite as bad. And the fact that we are a healthier county, and people have made those decisions, I think is why I feel confident right now in taking the step we're taking. So if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or Joanne can, or we have Dimitri available, and also Mike, right, Mike Grober?
And Mike Grober.
But I hope I can come back in two weeks and tell you everything's going great. Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Mr. Ely?
So are we going to have, on the website, reference material for people to come back and say, "Okay, so it is X amount of people that can still be together, or here are the restrictions that are still in place"? Are those going to be on the website that people are going to be able to see and follow up with?
Do you want, can we make a list of specific...
That's one of the things that we've been talking about the last week. We, we just found out the, the exact language on the governor's...
You may have scooted up a little bit, sorry.
We just found out at 3:00 for the actual language he was going to be using.
So I have had a real problem with issuing orders that we really can't enforce. You know, and I've told, I think I've told you all, all these orders have been, all these orders have been conditioned on the fact that 99% of the people are going to voluntarily comply. Because if even 10% of the people didn't comply, we don't have enough health department workers or, you know, to send out and do anything. So, so I think what we probably will, will be doing for sure is, is to put out some suggestions to businesses, just in case they're not on the governor's site. We'll put out suggestions, "Here's 10 things that we think you should do." But are we going to go out and, and check and make sure they're doing them? We don't have the manpower to do that.
Well, if we're going to follow what the governor's going to do, if we're going to follow the state, and am I understanding, whatever the state does is what St. Charles County is going to have in place? So if that's the case, then people would be able to go to the state website, and they would be able to get all of the information from the state website. If you have any questions, if the state website says this, that's also in place for St. Charles County. Because I know people are going to have questions, because my phone blew up right after the governor finished his thing. Is St. Charles County going to do this, too? Are we going to be able to go back to work? Is this going to be able to happen?
We'll definitely have a link on the website to governor's order tomorrow, and to the governor's frequently asked questions.
Great.
I read that prior to the meeting, it pretty much addresses everything. He did a really good job of it, okay?
Wasn't it, the governor's orders somewhat, like, to the discretion of that business? I mean, isn't it kind of vague? Like, we're, I think that you're going to get, you know, law enforcement and the health department, you're going to get more ridiculed by social media than any law enforcement or health is going to do. I mean, I'll tell you, that's what the businesses are afraid of. They don't want, if there's rules set out there that this is the procedure that should be followed, it's not going to be the health department, or the sheriff's department, or whoever to come rescue them, it's going to be the ridicule that they'll receive. And I'm telling you, that's what they're afraid of. And so...
Ridicule from who?
From the general public, like on social media, say, "They're not following this and that," which is, just, I guess, just as good, I mean, it's worked, you know, but...
That's what I was referring to. I mean, a couple of the restaurateurs I talked to realize that their customers are going to expect a lot from them, and they're not going to, they, you know, one of them said, "I'm going to take another week or so to make sure I'm ready, and make sure I've got everything in place." Because, because, yeah, that's no easier way to lose customers than for them to come in and feel like they're not safe there.
Totally agree, and that's...
Their whole marketing, their whole marketing scheme's going to be, "Hey, we've got great food, and we got a safe place to eat it."
That's exactly right, Steve, and that's how it's going to be monitored. It's not going to be any...
I agree, 100%.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any other comments, questions?
So one of the things that I, sorry, go ahead.
Finish up, Mr. Ely.
I have two questions for Dimitri.
Sure, that'd be great.
Dimitri, I guess, two questions that I have concerns about. I see a lot of different estimates about how many people, what percentage of the population[1731.65] is asymptomatic. In other words, people that have got the disease, show no, uh, sign of the disease, but then can transmit it to other people that can get very sick from it. So I was wanting to know approximately what you think the population might be of asympta- asympta- asymptomatic people in St. Charles County. And secondly, I'd like to know what your opinion is of the CDC stating, I think a day or two ago, that just because you get this stuff once, doesn't mean that you're going to be immune from it from a, if you get it again. So even though that you might get it and recover like you can a lot of diseases and never get it again, they said you could get COVID over and over again. What is your opinion of that, I guess?
Just because you get this stuff once, doesn't mean that you're going to be immune from it. Even though that you might get it and recover all the symptoms, it's going to get it, say you could COVID over and over.
Can anybody else understand that?
It's, he's listening to the delay.
No, he, there's a delay there.
Even though that you might get it-
Yes.
Is Demetrius available?
Yeah, he's there. No, that's bad.
Hello?
Hello?
So, um, I, I only, I, I was trying to switch between the two and I got part of the question. I think it was, um, how many people do I think are asymptomatic?
I'm not, I'm not sure what he's being picked up on. Is he just on his phone?
Absolutely no idea.
Okay, Demetrius, I'm going to hang down on you and see if the webex goes around.
Okay.
Are you on?
Can we hear you?
Can you, me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
This is pitiful technology.
It's terrible, yeah, unbelievable. Okay, that's-
I'm just going to-
Zoom works better than whatever this is.
Hello?
Go ahead and, and, uh, and the question first of all is all counted.
Yes. Uh, what, I see a lot of varying percentages thrown out there for the percentage of the population that's asymptomatic. And do you have any, any wild guess of what that was, that, uh, percentage might be in our county? How many people that have got it or been exposed to it don't even know that, that could be transmitting it? So that was question one. And then question two was, what is your opinion of the, compared to the CDC that once you get this virus, you may be not immune from it again? You may be able to get it more than once?
So first question, Demetrius, can you get it more than once?
We don't know. Um, other coronaviruses, um, you can get more than once, but we don't know if this is exactly like other ones. Um, most coronaviruses and viruses in general, you usually only get once.
And then the first question, I took them in reverse order, sorry, councilman, is, um, do you have any idea what percentage of cases are asymptomatic and never develop symptoms?
We don't because there isn't that antibody testing widely available just yet. But we're increasingly seeing a lot of people who've tested positive and have had very mild or almost no symptoms. They're getting tested because of one mild symptom and an exposure. We suspect that number is quite high. But without that serological antibody testing, we don't know.
Have him explain the antibody test.
Could, could you, Ken Executive elements asking that you explain a little bit about the antibody tests and what that shows?
Yeah, so whenever a person is exposed to a virus, their body develops antibodies, kind of tools to fight off that virus. And the presence of those antibodies, um, will usually linger sometimes for your entire life, a person's entire life, um, that allows them to fight off that same disease if it ever enters their body again. So, you know, you get exposed to a rhinovirus that causes a cold, um, you'll usually have the antibodies against that rhinovirus for the rest of your life. You'll always be able to fight it. Your body will know what it needs to do to fight that particular infection when you're exposed to it again. The testing that I'm talking about, the serological antibody testing, it tells us that you've been exposed to the disease and your body has mounted an immune response against it and knows how to fight it. We don't know how long the antibodies last for this particular disease.
So that will give, that will still how many people had it, were eight, that were, were, uh, non-symptomatic, right?
Right.
I didn't hear that.
It, the, Ken Executive was just saying that doing the antibody tests will begin to, to ferret out the population that had it but were asymptomatic.
Correct, yes.
Any other questions for the health director?
Thank you, Demetrius.
Thank you, Demetrius. Are we ready to move on? Can't believe so. Next. What's that?
No.
No, you have any?
I'm, I'm not going through that. We'll just deal with it another time.
Okay. All right, next up is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have an item I'd like to remove.
Okay.
Would be the parks, parks purchase.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to, uh, remove the parks, uh, purchase, uh, from the consent agenda. I believe what we do, uh, our new procedure is to discuss this first, right? Or not?
Yeah.
That's what we've been-
You can discuss, yes, you can discuss this item.
This item right here, and then if we, okay.
Point of order, though, I'd like to know is, like, for instance, this, I don't intend to vote for this, but I want to vote for the rest of the consent agenda. So I'd like to have a ability not to be either or. I'd like to be able to vote for the rest of the consent agenda and not this. And sometimes that's not clear when you vote, so.
Okay, yes. Council?
I, I think the procedure is, the procedure has historically been that, uh, you remove and vote on that item and then come back.
And take up the consent agenda, uh, after, after that vote. So we would take that issue off, discuss it, and then take a vote on it, and then, uh, go back to consent agenda and take the consent agenda up, uh, depending on that vote of whether it incorporates that item or not.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that, councilman.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so let's discuss the Parks, uh, Department issue.
I, I'm with Joe on this one. I would not attend to vote, I won't vote for it right now, but I would like to say I think it would be only fair to pull it off. And then at the next meeting, when we have public comment and we, John Greifhues can be here and he can explain his position, so we completely understand it. We can't do it over this internet thing, it isn't working. And we'll just see what it is and maybe in between time you can call us and we can do a little more homework. And then that's what I would recommend. We just don't vote it down, we just wait to see what, gather more information.
That's fine.
Okay, so I, I would need a motion to table this particular, uh, part of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to table this, uh, Parks bill?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that, uh, has been tabled. Now we will consider the rest of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. All right, next up is, uh, bills for final passage, beginning with bill number 4837.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Where's the title? We'll read the title first. Bill number 4837, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to our, our single-family residential district as per application RZ 20-01.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to withdraw this bill with a little comment regarding what we're doing it. Basically, uh, I'll read this from the applicant, okay? It says, "I wanted to let you know that we will not be going forward with our request rezoning. Your bill," referring to the bill we passed for the, for the minor subdivision plots, "made our decision easy and will save us far more money than the cost of the application fee. The bill was a great common sense move for the county and my wife and I want to thank, sincerely thank you." And this Tom DeBrey, he was the applicant. "Mr. DeBrey has decided to do his 160 acres, at least for now, six, five acres. He's already sold one lot, okay? That area has pretty, um, farm-to-market roads. It's a pretty rural area, so I think the bill that we passed a few weeks ago has had the required effect. He's looking at it. He can make more financial sense by doing the minor subdivision on five acres, okay? And as a result, we're going to have somewhere, uh, we would say three acre developments. When you go to, to five acre, or five acre developments, you end up having about 40% less development, okay, as far as terms of roads and the like. You also have less runoff, less land disturbance. There's a lot of benefits in rural areas. So, uh, we, I want to make a notion with, withdraw this, but I do want to know, we've drawn it for the right reason. He looked at the effect of the new bill that we passed a few weeks ago, really liked what it did, and that part of the county more likely will stay five acres as a result of that bill."
Good job.
Yeah, there was, there was, uh, some very positive comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission about the new bill that we passed several weeks ago on this. They, they were appreciative of the fact that these folks now no longer have to come before them for, you know, making that decision between five acre, three acre lot. I need three people to, um, concur.
I concur.
I concur.
I concur.
And, okay, Mr. Hammond concurs, okay? So that being said, uh, the bill, uh, bill number 4837 is withdrawn. Is that correct? Do we need a vote or not? Okay, all right. Next of all, we need bill number, we will bring up, uh, bill for final passage, bill number 4838.
Bill number 4838, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri highways and transportation commissions, state block grant agreement, amendment number three, airport improvement program grant, project 16-111A-2, to extend the project time period to allow for completion of the work for design runway electrical lighting system rehabilitation and new vault at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field.
Questions or comments on bill number 4838? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4838, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri highways and transportation commissions, state block grant agreement, amendment number three, airport improvement program grant, project 16-111A-2, to extend the project time period to allow for completion of the work for design runway electrical lighting system rehabilitation and new vault at St. Charles County Regional Airport Smart Field. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4838 passes. Uh, next up for final passage is bill number 4839.
Bill number 4839, an ordinance approving agreement with the Missouri highways and transportation commission for improvements needed to reduce congestion on I-70 from Cave Springs Boulevard to Fairgrounds Road.
Questions or comments on this particular bill? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4839, an ordinance approving agreement with the Missouri highways and transportation commission for improvements needed to reduce congestion on I-70 from Cave Springs Boulevard to Fairgrounds Road. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Okay, bill number 4839 passes. Uh, the final bill for approval is bill number 4840.
Bill number 4840, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute from intergovernmental agreements for governmental agencies to use the county emergency operations center at 1400 T.R. Hughes Boulevard, O'Fallon, as a continuity of operation site.
Okay, questions or comments on bill number 4840? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number 4840, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute form intergovernmental agreements for governmental agencies to use the county emergency operations center at 1400 T.R. Hughes Boulevard, O'Fallon, as a continuity of operation site. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes. Bill number 4840 passes. Now we move to bills for introduction, beginning with bill number 4842.
Bill number 4842, requested by Michael Harlbert, sponsored by Joe Cronin. An ordinance relating to housing and community assistance and one approving the 2020 annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year 2017 through 2019, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan in two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the 2020 annual action plan.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
I'd be happy to take credit for this because it looks like a pretty good thing, but I don't, I, I just, I think Mike might have put me on there as a former chair of the council, maybe. So anyway, uh, but, uh, anyway, it's the same thing I think we do year after year. And, um, I don't know why my name's on there, but if I can take credit for it, what the heck?
Okay. Uh, next up for, uh, bills for introduction is bill number 4843.
Bill number 4843, requested by Samantha Shadrack, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance amending section 115.710 of the ordinance of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, concerning the personnel administration plan and amending the 2020 budget for a position within the St. Charles County Department of Emergency Communications.
Questions or comments on bill 4843? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to bill number 4844 for introduction.
Bill number 4844, requested by Ryan Graham, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance authorizing execution of the Partners for Fish and Wildlife Program landowner agreement and accepting grant funds up to the amount of $6,686.07 from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and to participate in a wildlife habitat improvement program on land owned by St. Charles County and managed by the Parks and Recreation Department.
Questions or comments? Yes, Mr. White?
Is this the first time you've used this grant when you're partnering?
I think it's on, but yeah, this is the first that I've ever seen.
It's a good program.
Yes, I, my, my wife and I have visited all the county parks. Actually, last week went fishing out at Klondike Park and, uh, you know, fairly good. Beautiful, beautiful park, so.
I'm glad that Ryan's doing this because anybody that's got land, I mean, John, I'm sure you do, I do with my farm, those payments under these programs are good and they also very beneficial to fish and wildlife. So besides this federal one, there's a ton of state ones out there as well, so.
And these, these are shrinking, they're not as many issued anymore.
Yeah, but I think this is the first one I've ever seen us get, I think. So that's great. Good job, Ryan.
Yes. Okay, next bill for introduction is bill number 4845.
Bill number 4845, requested by Demetrius Chancy Chapman, sponsored by Terry Hollander. An ordinance authorizing the county executive or is designated to execute a memorandum of understanding between St. Charles County and the Missouri Department of Corrections for the administration and reading of tuberculosis skin tests, TST, and for the administration of specified vaccinations to department employees, volunteers, and interns.
Questions or comments on bill number 4845? Okay, seeing none, that ends our bills for introduction. Uh, any bills to be removed from the table? Seeing none? Do we have announcements? Anyone? Yes. Mr. Hammond?
Yes. I was wondering if, if we've done anything with the highway department with the large turnover of maintenance workers. I know for a fact since January, there's been 12. We've lost 12, uh, people over at the maintenance shed, uh, throughout the county and, and, I, I've got some other numbers too, of number of turnovers we've had there. And I think had we had a major snowstorm, we may have had some problems this past winter with, with the reduction of people that have left the highway department. Are we doing anything about that?
Well, like a lot of jobs when the, when the, um, before all this economic downturn happened because of the COVID-19 closures, the market was so hot, people were leaving for jobs right and left. So, um, we're just continuously in, you know, recruitment mode. And in addition to that, I think, uh, Samantha Shadrack and her people are really putting some teeth into studying positions. So I, I don't think you'll see all the, the simple indexing that went on before. She, she really understands the process. And so hopefully, uh, as that group goes through the, um, review, uh, you'll see really[1736.63] the review, you'll see really good numbers coming out of where the market is on those folks.
Well, I noticed that a lot of those people went to other cities that are paying higher. So, I don't know if it's because the county isn't paying as well as we can for those maintenance workers. And I, I don't think their pay comes out of our general fund, does it? Comes out of the highway budget?
It comes out of highway, right, of the road and bridge fund.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll send you some information I want to share with you, and maybe we can have, discuss it further.
And we'll get that all to her. You know, it's like, anything that you do, you can do it, you know, through the steps people tell you to do, or you can really fine tune it. And I, I think our current HR director really understands what those comparisons are and is able to go in with the software that she has access to and fine tune, not just, hey, I'm looking at the United States, or I'm looking at the Midwest, but looking at where our market is for where people are willing to drive from to work here and to get a concept of who are our competitors and how are they paying. And she's been working really hard on that.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
Yes, we are announcements right now, Joe.
Steve or Joanne, can we, yesterday, and like Nancy said, I was talking to her on the phone yesterday as well. I was in defiance, doing some mowing and things like that, and...
Did you find your glasses?
No, I got, I got left in the pickup truck. I thought I dropped them in the field. I couldn't read anybody's text. I couldn't read, I didn't have my glasses. Anyway, the, seems like everybody, I'm sure you're getting this from everybody, everyone from St. Louis County, St. Louis, everyone comes down to our area, which is wonderful. The parks are great. You got the Katy Trail. But I'm telling you, can we get some enforcement out there if the weather's good this weekend, just for speeders? And it's like, it's like a parade. I mean, it's just crazy. 94 was packed.
Do you have double enforcement in parks?
I've seen some deputies out, or I always say deputies, but I've seen some police people, police officers out there. They've been doing fairly well. But it's, I mean, I'm telling you, there are a lot of people out there, and a lot of people are calling me.
St. Louis County closed their parks. We didn't close ours, but we did double the police presence out there. So, maybe they, maybe they need to get out of the park a little bit.
Well, yeah, I mean, and they're doing a good job, but it's just crazy, Steve. It's crazy. And, you know, so, it's just, if we can do anything about it, you know, just have some people, some presence down there on the highway, on 94. State, I don't know if they'll do anything, you know, they don't, they're not even out there.
I'll let the chief know that you'll have been seeing that. Yeah, I think with the good weather, at least Sunday of this past weekend, and then the weekend before, people were crazy.
They were taking a drug.
Insane, yeah, because they have nowhere else to go. And we welcome everyone, but it's just, you know, wow.
Put up a chip jar or something.
Mr. Cronin?
I just want people to think about, memory about two outstanding citizens we lost this last week, few days. One being Officer Bush, who was a Air Force veteran, I believe, a 50-year police officer for St. Charles County. He passed this week. And then also Ozzy, or Orville Mayor in O'Fallon. He was a city treasurer for O'Fallon for decades. He was also an officer for Bank of O'Fallon and Boatsman's Bank of O'Fallon, very involved in churches out there. And I have a special connection with him, because I met my wife 48 years ago at a party at his house. But just an outstanding man as well. A lot of, his entire life, he led in various capacities in the local, in the local area. So, think of those two families in your prayers. Ozzy was also a World War II veteran in the Army Air Corps. So, anyway, I just thought I'd mention that real quickly.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Anyone else?
So...
Yes.
Couple of things. So, I think it's important for everybody to remember, and the County Executive, I think, said it very well. When you open up your freedoms, if you will, and everybody's going to start going back to their version of normal life, if you're in an at-risk population, you have to make sure that you take care of yourself. And we've always been a very good county. That's been very good at personal responsibility. I was reading some great discussions, let's call them, on social media, because no one ever gets fired up on social media, right? Just because someone disagrees with you, you should probably take into account the way that you feel and how you're going to respond personally as to how you're going to respond to things being opened up. And just understand, I think it's easily, an easy thing to see, that the numbers are going to spike when people start getting back together on a regular basis, just because you're going to have more people getting together. And to what Mr. Cronin's been asking for, I think we're going to get more testing. And the more testing that you get, the more numbers I think you're going to see. So, I don't think anybody should be surprised about that. But I think it's just something, whether we opened up in May, June, July, August, 2025, it doesn't matter. Eventually, the numbers are going to go up when you start getting people back together. We were out at the park at Bromley Syc on Sunday. Man, we have some awesome parks.
You went good.
Unfortunately, a lot of them are in Mr. Brazel's district. But beyond that, we ventured out of District 3. We went over to District 2. We even went to the new O'Day Park in O'Fallon, which is a really nice park there. Everybody was being very responsible with their social distancing. So, hopefully, we'll use good judgment with our citizens as we, as we come out from all this, because you can tell a lot of people are tired of being together. My wife just wanted to get away from the kids, so she said, "Let's go for a drive on Sunday." So, we ended up doing a Parks Tour, which is nice. The last thing I would say is, put numbers into perspective and don't be led astray by raw numbers. One of the things that I didn't know before all this stuff started, we lose an average of 170 to 175 people a day in the state of Missouri. 170 to 175 people a day die in the state of Missouri before COVID-19. I didn't know that. So, when you look at, we've lost 288 people so far. 288 people's a lot of people, and that's really sad. But when you put that in perspective, on an average, in the state of Missouri, over the last three years, that's less than two days' average death toll. One of the things that I wanted to ask, but to be honest with you, I was just frustrated and didn't want to go with the back and forth with the whole WebEx thing, is are we seeing more people die in the state of Missouri on average this year, or are we seeing less? Or is it too early to be able to tell? I don't know how many people die on average in St. Charles County. So, I don't know how to put 31 deaths or 32 deaths, as it is today, into perspective. I know we lost way too many at one particular place. That has really skewed our numbers in terms of the losses in our county. It's been really unfortunate, but it is what it is. And we can't do anything about that at this point. But I think a lot of times, people hear raw numbers and they get scared, and they don't know what to do with that. So, I think it's good to put numbers in some sort of context, so you understand what they look like. 7,500 to 8,000 people die a day in the United States of America over the last four years. That's just a fact, and that's before COVID hit. So, I don't know if we're losing more, if we're losing less, or what that looks like right now. But I just think it's good to kind of put things into perspective as you move forward and you start getting back to what is normal life for you. And that's going to be different for everybody as we kind of move forward. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there before we left today.
I can add to that. If you took all the people that died of heart disease, cancer, diabetes, and the flu last year, and you add them to the same category this year, there's been little to no increase of death. And so, and so if you look at, even in New York and these other places, no one's dying of cancer or heart disease or other things and die of COVID. You've got to ask yourself why.
Okay. And with that, I'll say motion to dismiss? Second? Maybe have a second? We do? All right, meeting is adjourned.
Steve, thank you. Seriously.